One thing that we need to add, don't forget this, we need to have that special meeting.
So you should be good. I'll be right there. I put the zoom up there so everybody can see. I'll be right back there.
How's Eric doing tonight?
All right.
Britt, you got a microphone close, they can hear you well.
Can I turn your phones or what?
I'm sure your phones turned off. We'll call this commissioners meeting to order. Can we all stand and face the flag for the pledge allegiance, please? Remove your hat, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Maybe she. Roll call, Britton Luther.
Present.
RJ Dunvin.
Here.
And Tim Yocum, we're present, so. We're going to have, first of all, we're going to have the election of president and vice president of the commissioners, and let's open on the floor.
Make a motion that Tim Yocum be president.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. You have a motion for vice president?
I'd like to make a motion that RJ Dunvin be the vice president for the calendar year 2021.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We're going to move on. We wish you all, we're glad to see you all here tonight. We're going to have, every other meeting is going to be a night meeting. I think it's important, I think we all do, to make it so the public can be here. And so, we're a work in progress. If you can tell us anything, we can do better. Please tell us. We're here to help, and so, please, don't act like you're inconvenienced if you tell us something we can do better, because we can always be better. We can always make our meetings better, and we will do better. First of all, I want to make the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Motion to approve the immediate minutes from the previous meeting?
I've not received the minutes, so I can, I abstain.
Okay. I heard them before.
No, I mean, I wasn't here either as.
Do what?
I wasn't here as a commissioner, so I'd have to abstain as well.
Okay. What do we do here?
Well, give me a sec, I just looked at that statute the other day, but I don't quite remember.
Like I said, we're going to hit some bumps in this learning process, and we will become more and more efficient as time goes on. The same way with the payroll, be the same situation. Could we move on to the treasurer's report and come back to that?
I suggest we table the minutes until we receive those and approve them at a later date.
Okay. So can we have a treasurer's report then?
I put it up there.
Okay.
Trust Indiana.
Yeah, I got to copy that.
For the investment report or the treasurer's report?
We've got on here treasurer report, investment report slash investment report.
You should have the treasurer's report and the investment report.
Okay, how much did to return do we have on our? Last page.
Total interest on Trust Indiana was a hundred, 102,374.52 for 2020.
And if you don't know what, Brenda, you go into how.
Trust Indiana is a state-run investment program. The money can literally go in and out the same day. So the interest rates are really low right now, so.
Yeah, it's a great program, and it.
Compared to last year, we probably had half the funds in there, and then last year at this time, we were about 300,000.
And the interest on those accounts, does it roll back over into the same account, or what does it do?
Into the same accounts, yes.
Okay. So it went from about 300 and some thousand last year to 120 some this year, correct?
Yes.
Tim, if you will, as a point of order, if we'd have the people come up to the podium and anybody that we're recognizing to be able to.
Sounds good.
Be able to properly record.
Appreciate that. Next on the order is the health department report. Over there to the desk, right over here, you can.
Right here, right up here.
Excuse me, I've been here. Well, you know, COVID didn't get any better. Sorry about this, but Bill and Wendy kind of last second. I'll start with the.
She's making more.
Total cases, we've got 1,303 cases. We've got 32 deaths. The health department has tested 5,933. We have a positivity rate of 20.8, which puts the county in the red. And anything over 15 puts us.
15% of tested?
Yeah. So that's the bad side of it. The good side is January 7th, we will have 100 doses of vaccine. Then on January 11th, we follow up with 100 more. And we start dispensing them on January 12th. And frontline workers will sign up through state website, and they'll be first come. And then after that, we're waiting on the directions from the state.
Yeah, administered by the health department, correct?
Yes, and there's other places, hospitals, CBS, other places, we'll be giving shots. This only deals with the health department. So I wish it was better, but it's not. It's one thing you need to keep in mind, 25 people to meeting or in a gathering right now, while we're in the red. So we're close, so I.
You can stand up there and direct that if you want to.
If I leave, I'll, there'll be one less, so. Anyway, just have to keep in mind, you know, keep in check, so.
A question, you say 100 doses just for the health department? Is that a?
Well, it would be a total two on two different days, but it's not starting out with a lot. But I think a lot of emergency workers don't like it, I hear not, but I think some of the frontline workers are getting the vaccine, have already received it, but that's through the hospital.
How many doses did the hospital receive?
I don't, I do not know that.
Are they coordinating with you so that we know?
It's working pretty well. You know, I told 5,000 tests, they probably have done that or more. A lot of had to go with Park County and get the instant test. Now, they don't give us the instant test at the health department. So a lot of people trying to get back to work, kind of have to wait if they go through us, and a lot of them are choosing to go with Park County and get the instant test so they can be released quicker.
What's the difference between them getting, Park County having it, and we're not having it available to us?
No, I do, I do not know why that is.
Is that the Park County Health Department or CBS and Park County?
No, it's Park County Health Department. So.
So you say we ought to rise or decline, or we holding steady? What would you say as far as our?
We're going, I mean, we're going up, and, you know, I'm not going to mention any names, but we had to, you know, one restaurant had to close because of COVID, and we didn't appreciate, you know, we didn't like that, but they're just, we're on top of it, so hopefully we get it open again. But we don't want that to go through the county, you know.
Have we arranged for enough of the response, or I guess the staff to be able to administer the shots? Do we have that all lined up?
And I know that Wendy met with Ashley today, and they're working on that cares, getting all the money straightened out, so. So I think it's going to come out real well, and appreciate Ashley coming down, getting her, getting all of us on the right track, so.
Public guidance, comments or questions for the health department?
Close the date, January 7th, someone's the other day.
I'm sorry?
Close the.
Oh, the 11th. 7th and the 11th, and then we'll start administering the 12th.
Is that going to be at Beargram's, I had heard?
There, we're going to have it north one too, but not on the 12th, it'll come later. But it's going to be at the extent or the 4-H office. So, and that's where, you know, just like working out the money, because she's got to get, be able to pay the people to administer it, et cetera. Any other?
Thank you. Next is Vermillion Rise, Bob.
I don't have a lot to report, just will share that, starting off the year, we, phone's been ringing and a couple of inquiries, so we're taking that as a good sign and hope to see, see some activity in 2021. That's really all I have right now.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Bob? Here's your chance.
We'll be back regularly.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Vermillion Trails Association, I don't see no one here.
I didn't know if anyone was here or not, but we are looking forward to working with the Trail Alliance on a, that half marathon in 5K. So we've signed a license agreement, and that'll be a pretty neat event. Matter of fact, talking to some of our economic development colleagues are interested in coming to their eyes and participating, so it's shaping up to be a neat event.
What is the supposed date for that or time?
April 10th.
April 10th?
Yes.
On a Saturday, probably?
Yes.
Okay. IT update.
Okay, so I've got, I had all the email addresses created for all the council and all the commissioners now. So if you were elected official in Vermillion County, you now have email addresses. I've sent all those email addresses to Annie, and she has the passwords. If you need help logging in, give us a call, we'll help you get through that. We had a router failure yesterday. We were able to take the router from the EOC in Clinton and bring it up, program it, and had about five hours of downtime, just because we had to program a router. So I'm going to work on getting a quote to have a cold spare sitting in the server room.
Yeah, I'd be the hot swap.
Tim, you're going to be getting an email from Scott Jones about a secondary internet connection. I'm going to go ahead and wait until the first year to, to start that process. He's with Speedstream, I believe. They were suggested by Level 365, the phone provider. As far as that goes, though, all the outgoing officers have had their rights taken away and disabled in the system, emails disabled. The ones that aren't disabled had the passwords changed and given to the new office holders.
You didn't have to get passwords off anyone, you could change them anyway, is that what, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
So that was, that one issue regardless?
Nope, nope. So we've got that taken care of. Just basic housekeeping stuff, help desk tickets, and that's really it. We're working on getting the backups moved and freeing up some space in that new server environment that we created last year, so. And then phone updates, everything seems to be working really smooth. No complaints come through on that recently, so we're looking to be in pretty good shape. And then we're also, we're also working, I talked to Britton yesterday, and he had mentioned some security audits and this type of thing. We've, we've actually got security reports, and we've got a product that we use, so you guys will be seeing security reports from us that we'll produce probably by the next meeting. So that way you can take a look and see what you're looking at, where we stand as a, as a company, instead of as a government entity.
Now, currently with the new IT contract, originally, it seemed like there was two lines coming in, but then when I talked to, I think you and I talked to the lady with 365, they're piggybacking on that line, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Originally, we want two lines coming in.
Yep.
And we, right now, we only got one, and.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'm going to have Scott Jones contact you about, is getting that second line in. Now, it's just going to be a base connectivity, you're not going to get much speed out of it. It is a fail-safe in case the main goes down. It switches over to that for phone traffic and very basic internet traffic. A lot of businesses have two symmetrical lines in your bucket. For what we do here, I think you can get by on a standard business package that's not symmetrical, so.
So we'll see something through the email?
Yeah, I'll give you something via email, probably this week if not next, okay?
Anybody else got any questions for the IT guy?
Brenda, you need to, do that every once in one?
When he smacked the gavel, it knocked it off the. It's okay. It's okay.
Can everybody hear back there what's being said?
If you can't, please let us know, please let us know. Okay. We'll move right along. Jail renovation? Okay, who wants to talk about that or start with that? We're going to have another meeting, I guess, we're going to probably have another meeting next week, correct?
We need to address that. There's two contracts that, or one contract, I'm saying. HWC is wanting to look at providing engineering and design services for the water line to be turned from basically the rise over to the jail, as far as a potable water line and a fire line and service line. And the issues concerning those, we need to discuss those contracts further with them, and they're not here tonight. So what I suggest is that we have a special session with the jail only, and that we do that either Thursday or Friday this week, or at some point next week, but here shortly.
Okay.
Whatever your pleasure is, so if we can name that.
We're still kind of looking out in the future, and whether this is totally correct, we'd like to have a bid date sometime in May or June, that's roughly. And then roughly a two-year project, is that within? I mean, we're just talking, we, we're just trying to give you some type of information, it's speculative. Also, I want to say Ashley Avi James is here, and she's from the council. I think that we need to realize what the council has done and the commissioners have done as far as this project. And how much money will we have approximately on hand at bid date sake in May of next year, Ashley, approximate?
You're saying to put cash down on the project?
Yeah, how much?
Uh, we'll have several million.
How much? Can you come up there and say and speak if you could, so everybody can hear, I'm sorry.
Currently, we've put back for the last couple of years, and so we will have several million dollars. We haven't decided an exact amount to put down, but we do have a substantial amount that will help us, it'll save us any interest that we have to play out.
You say approximately what was?
Um, I'm guessing three to five million at this time.
Okay. That's commendable, and then we've got to put down, and some people think it's something that we want to build this jail, we have to do this and have to get it done. We went way too long, and we've lost millions of dollars by delays, so. We have some more meetings, they'll be public meetings, someone wants to come, so. Handbook, where we have the handbook?
We think we have the final language down, so the next step is to get the handbook committee to meet and have them recommend the handbook to the three of you.
Who's on the handbook committee?
Oh, I think, I think it's the commissioners and any elected official that wanted to be on the committee. Do you know?
So it's the sheriff, the auditor. It's the sheriff, the auditor, we have, normally have the president and the commissioner. We have the council president and/or their, whoever they deem to join us, and then the sheriff is on there, and then myself.
Okay.
Of course, with John Spurren, Scott.
To have a meeting, we have to advertise in English, that's just a.
It's just a committee. Usually they just meet after, well, you said they'd meet after our morning meeting.
Okay.
I'm sure you guys could potentially meet before next commissioners meeting, couldn't you?
Yeah, because they make a recommendation to you guys, they have no real authority to, to make a decision.
That way we have the recommendation by next commissioners meeting?
I think, I think so.
I think that'll be a problem.
Yeah.
Would that be electronic, will we have it coming?
I can send it Google Docs, or I can send it in Word.
Either way.
Okay.
Send it to me in Word.
Send it to you in Word, okay.
You already got it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about the handbook from? I want to make some people, recognize some people here tonight. I've got some new elected officials here tonight. We've got Kelly Somerville, raise your hand, Kelly, he's on the council. We have Rick Weir here tonight, he's a new one on the council. Am I missing somebody? Oh, we got, we got the surveyor hiding back there, don't we? And Mr. Mack is going to do a great job in the surveyor's office, he's already jumping in there, and so we appreciate what he's doing. Moving on down the line, 2021 appointments. Let's say something before we go on here, that we've had a tremendous response. This is the first year, I think, we've really promoted it, put it online, made it available to people, and it's a great program. Next year, I think, if I'm, tell me if I'm talking too much, but next year, I think we'd, by November the 1st, we'd like to have it all set up so people have more time to apply. And these boards are important. I mean, if you want to make a difference in the community, here's your chance, and we appreciate everyone that's been involved in this program.
It's a nice segue into this. Some of the things that we're doing is that we're not complete with this process yet. What we did, we received applications over the, the website. Of those, we went through each one of the appointments that the commissioners have. There are other appointments, but these are just the board of commissioners' appointments. With that said, there is still some work to do with the terms of the different committees and, and boards that has not been resolved yet, and I'm hoping by the June date that we will have that worked out as to what those appointments will be and how long they will serve. Hoping to get into a staggered where we still maintain some continuity in these boards and, but yet allow people to, if they're active and participate in these. What we're looking for is people who actually care and want to serve on these boards, and they're going to be active on the boards. And that's one of the things that we're considering. Basically, we have the residency and district requirements that we look at, the status of serving on multiple boards. Actually, commissioners back in 2017 requested, or actually passed a resolution that all, that the commissioners would consider that we don't have multiplicity in the boards. In other words, that we don't have the same person serving on the same, on different boards all the way across the, the network of commissions that we have. The reason for that is, is that we'd like to get more ideas, and the more people that have input to this, the more discussion we might have with the respective appointees. The third thing was qualifications of what they were applying for and what we felt like with what information they had on their, their applications as to, and whether talking with some of their, the people that they know and that they listed as references. The, also, one of the things is also the history of their public service in the past, and I guess the last thing, already kind of mentioned this one, was board multiplicity. With that said, I'll name off the, we have some that will not be named tonight, they're pending. I'll name them in the order in which we have them on our sheet, which we have assigned them. For the Vermillion Rise, Tom Milligan, Mick Mack, Joe Ellis, Eddie Thompson, and Joel Wish. For the Economic Development Council, we have Leonard Akers. This is actually a replacement for RJ Dunvin's, he resigned his seat because of being a commissioner. And Tim Yocum, and the reason why Tim is, he's the president of the commissioners, and he'll replace Mike Cardy. Economic Development, be Ron Dunman, Mrs. Senior. For Board of Zoning Appeals, Judy, Judith Palonce. Property Tax Adjustment Board, Brad Ringwald, Arliss Taylor. E91 Board, District 1, this one has to be by districts. Bob Spence, District 2, Amanda Murphy. And District 3, Brent Lewis. Alcohol Beverage Board, Margaret Sockwell. Area Plan Commission, right now, we don't have that appointment to make from the commissioners, I think that'll have to be replaced as a NAG agent to the, from the county. And right now, Phil Cox is a non-resident, they'll be naming that person, it won't come from the commissioners. For the Clinton Library Board, there are no appointments due at this time. The Newport Library Board, the director there at the library had requested that the commissioner like to interview and make a recommendation to the commissioners, and so we will hold off on that appointment tonight. On the redevelopment committee, or redevelopment, there's no appointments due at this point in time. On the Area Plan Commission, there's no appointments due at this time. And as a matter of additional notes to this, we will be working, like I said, till Ju, hopefully by June, we will have the staggered terms under review and make those recommendations for the public to comment on. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these appointments as, as voiced and for the year, or for their terms, as to be decided at a later date.
Tim, I'll second that motion.
Oh, they were saying, aye?
Aye.
And just, any Indians? Pass, thank you. Okay.
You could have a comment. We don't have to.
We're going to still, like Britton said, we have a lot of work to do on those boards as far as times and staggers, and there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done there, so we'll probably hold it off for another meeting, until a lot of part of the meeting maybe, to address that.
One of the questions that is on the, that some people, I think, were a little bit taken back on is the political affiliation. The reason why that's asked for is that some of these committees, you have to have a Republican and a Democrat, or so many Republicans, so many Democrats on each of the boards. So that's the reason why that is on the, on the application, whenever that's there. So that's the reason why that is on the, on the application, whenever that's there. If you don't list it and you're applying for a board, it probably won't be considered, since we won't know which way you, which way you sit on those boards, so make sure if you're on a board, that does make a difference, that you do fill in that portion of it, though. Uh, the other thing we'd like to do is actually interview, uh, this time around, we weren't able to be able to accommodate that with commissioners only being in office for a day, or I guess this is second day, uh, business days, and so in the future, we'd like to interview and also, um, get your capacity as to what you would like to do with the office. Where we want to go with this is to have people that have insight, that just don't apply for a board and then just attend the board meetings. We want someone, we want people who are gonna be active on the boards, that actually have a, a picture in their mind of how they want that board or where that committee and whatever their derivative is, to, to drive this and to drive that board, and so. Too many times, we've had these board members that sit back and are not active. Uh, they may vote, they may attend, but they're not active, and that's what we'd like to see is active members, if you would. So, anyway, going forward, that's one, where we're going with this, and we do have some appointments, I think, are due in June, maybe two appointments yet in June, and some of these are outstanding, and, um, and then by next November, we will have all this, I think, in pretty good order for the next series of appointments, anyway.
Again, I want to thank everybody for, uh, applying. It's been a good response. Next year, I think, will be a lot, even better, and so. Does someone have a question?
Now, and you're just be determining the, the staggered terms.
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, like I said, we got a lot of, if we, if we work on it, not yet, we'll be here for a couple hours, so we'll probably put it at the end of a meeting where someone wants to stay, they can, if they don't, they don't have to.
Yeah, it'll have to be a public meeting when we discuss this, so, um, and some of them are statutory, though they're defined by law as to what their terms are, and there's others that are, are at, they can go, we can change them by the day, for that matter, if we wanted to, I guess, but, um, the idea is to get to boards so that we keep a history of the board and some continuity to the boards as we go forward.
Again, thank you all, everyone for applying. Uh, E-nine-one-one address update? Anything about?
Penny's in the hospital, so I don't think.
Was that Penny?
Yeah.
Did Penny give anybody an indication where that issue's been taken care of?
Penny's in the hospital right now.
That's fine. She's not the only one around.
Well, she's the one over that park. Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll address that, address it next meeting. Uh, new business, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting schedule, I think that we put that out, it was posted here at the door, and it was also, uh, it's available, and so. It's up. What we're doing this year is every other meeting will be a night meeting, and it'll still be every two weeks, it'll be on a Tuesday. At six-thirty on nights, it'll be eight fifteen AM on a morning meeting. And so, um, that schedule is here, it's posted, uh, we'll get it on the, can you get it on the?